I will order the meeting to Greenwood Common Council on Monday, November the first. If you would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing. We'll be led in prayer this evening by Chris Holland of the Father House Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. President and City Council. Do bow your heads with me, please. Father God, we come to you tonight remembering your words of hope, your promise to never leave us nor forsake us. We stand together as a community with our mayor, the community leaders, asking you to lead us, guide us, and show us your mercy and your grace. We ask you to forgive us of any trespasses. We make a choice tonight to forgive everyone, everything, so that our petition would be heard and answered by you. We ask you to fill us full of love, love for you, love for one another, and love for righteousness, righteous living, righteous governance, and righteous judgment in all of our community decisions. Romans 13, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray tonight for our mayor, for the various levels of city council, and in particular for this assembled council tonight, asking you that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time, sense of the welfare and true needs of all the people represented here, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good for all, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them tonight. Please give an assurance of what would please you, what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Greenwood. I pray blessings over our first responders and over all our law enforcement officers and their families. In the name of my God, Jesus the Christ, amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call. Present.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Still.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Dillon.
Here.
And Wood.
Here. We do have a court. You all, you should have received copies of the minutes from our regular meeting on October the 18th. Do you have a motion, someone? Mr. Dine, second. Second, Mr. Hopper. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, then roll call in minutes.
I.
I.
Dine.
I.
Gibson.
Hopper.
I.
Lexi.
Out of staying.
Dillon.
I.
And Wood.
I.
Then it's approved on a vote of seven, zero, with one abstentions. Reports, corporation counsel.
You all should receive the items semi-monthly posted to SharePoint. That was the end of the report for this meeting. Got questions, please contact me and I'll be glad to answer them for you.
All right. Anything of control at this time?
Nothing at this time.
Any other committee or board reports? Seeing none, then this is a time on the agenda where we set aside an opportunity for public comment. Anybody that wishes to address the council concerning an item that is on tonight's agenda, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and there is a final time. All right. Seeing none, then moving on. Ordinances and resolutions, notice of intent to consider, ordinance number 2148.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning matter adopted by reference and unify development ordinance number 2029, proposed rezoning of approximately 43.59 acres located at the southwest corner of Cusville Road and Emerson Avenue. Mary E. Kent for local trust property sponsored by Donalds.
Right, do you have a motion? Motion, Mr. Lexi, second by Ms. Gibson. Mr. Tu, would you like to?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Brian Tuie. My address is 50 South Radian. And I'm here tonight for Lenar Homes of Indiana on the case, it was 2021-098 at the Plan Commission. Here with me tonight is Tony Bogato, the title manager of Lenar. I thank you for your time and hearing our presentation. I have a PowerPoint and this nice person Jeremy was nice enough to assist me in my competency in getting it voted. And so I'll go through that if that's okay with the council. So Lenar Homes of Indiana, it's the petitioner. They've been building homes in Indiana since the early 70s. And they're the largest home builder in central Indiana today. They have local architects that design homes that fit the Indianapolis market. And they've had great success in the central Indiana housing market over the last several years. The site that we are rezoning is about 43 and a half acres. And it's shown on that exhibit in front of you. It's on the south side of Cusville Road and on the west side of Emerson Avenue. And so around the site, if I go to the bottom of the site and I go sort of clockwise, there is a variety of zoning in that area. There's industrial zoning IL to the west. And that's that, I think it's called Nachi North America. And right alongside the site separating that industrial IL zoning is a railroad track. And then as you go north on Cusville Road, there's again another industrial use IL zoning, CTP. I think that may be Chicago Tube and Pipe, if I'm not mistaken. Now, going around the clock up to the north, again industrial zoning, IM zoning. That's Greenwood Record Service right on the other side of the street. You can kind of see it down there in that, it's glory, but it's right on the north side of Cusville Road. And as you go eastward, you start running into some residential zoning. There's RM zoning there to the north. Then as you go across Emerson Avenue to the north, RM zoning coming down south to the, along Emerson Avenue, there's RM zoning across the street. So in summary, around this 43 acre site, there's, first there's railroad tracks right on the west side. And then there's industrial zoning and then some residential zoning. And that subdivision is to the north is known as Briarstone. So on their north perimeter, sort of split zoning, they have the record service on the, over the north, straight north street, northwest, and then RM zoning to the straight north above the above the proposed, or the area of the site. So looking south, and just to familiarize you, which I know you know, that's looking south of Cusville Road. You can see the water tower off to right there. That tree line is where those railroad tracks are, right behind that. Then if you go on Emerson and you look west, you can actually see that Chicago Tube or CTP off in the distance. And then to the right of that, in a slightly near foreground, that white fencing, that's Greenwood Record Service. And then straight into that photograph, that is that tree line that shields the railroad tracks and the Nachi North America. So again, looking west from Emerson, looking west across the site. Then looking north on Emerson, on the left-hand side of that photograph is our site. And on the right is some residential use. I don't know if I mentioned this, but to the south, you actually, top of this property, you actually get it to Whiteman's Town Boundaries. So this is looking north of site to that Briarstone residential development that I've mentioned, which is the same zoning classification as part of the zoning classification we're seeing. And here's the record service ju- just directly north of the site. So what does Lenar propose to do? Members of the council, they respectfully requesting two zones. One, a zoning to RA on the west side of the site against the railroad track. And then two, a zoning to RM for single-family homes to the east of the site. And in that diagram, what you're looking at, on the left side of that blue line, is about 17 and a third acres. And Lenar's proposed development there is for attached townhomes, for sale townhomes, which I'll describe here in a minute. And then to the right side, which is east of that blue line, that would be for single-family RM zoning, and that's about 26 acres. In this whole 43 acres, there's about 12 acres of common area and playground area. To fill that picture in a little better for you, I think this does a good job of describing what they're proposing to do. So you can see the industrial over on the other side of the railroad tracks in Louisiana, Louisville and Indiana Railroad running down the west side. What they would propose to do is leave that green area as much as they can alongside that railroad track. And then put a walking path that would extend from the southwest corner of the site, all the way up to Cusville Road. And that walking path, that's a great line going from east to west below Greenwood Record. That would come across the north side of the site, dip down around the property that they're, don't own, and connect into the sidewalk system of the single-family site. And then over here on Emerson Avenue, there would be another walking path across the frontage of the development of Emerson Avenue that they have and that they're purchasing. And so what there, what that depicts there is about 12 and three quarters acres of common area that would be shared by residents of both the attached homes and the detached homes. And there's about 3,500 feet of trail. And then there'd be a playground area, which is sort of on the border between the attached and the detached home. The next slide shows the type of single-family homes they would build. These homes would range in size from about 1,600 square feet as a minimum for a one-story home, and about 1,800 square feet to 3,200 square feet for a two-story home. And these are some illustrations of the types of homes that they were proposed to build in the single-family. So this next slide actually shows some photographs of the two-story homes that they would build. They expect these to be somewhere in the low 300 to more than $400,000 in terms of a cost for these homes. The townhomes are shown in this drawing. And let me go back one other thing I should have mentioned. The, on the single-family homes, all the homes that have two-car or three-car attached garages, they would exceed the standards for that zoning classification, the RM zoning classification in terms of size of homes and lot size and lot widths. And these similar homes are being built in Elmwood, which is across the Emerson Avenue. The, the townhomes, which are shown here, they would be between 1,800 and 1,900 square feet, I'm sorry, 1,700 and 1,900 square feet approximately. They would all have two-car attached garages. They would be two-story. These are, each of these is a heated lot. And there are 69 of those on that 12 and three quarters acres. And these are expected to cost between the upper 200,000, so 260 or 70,000 to the low of 300,000. The timing of all this, if it's approved, would be start development next spring with homes coming, I believe, in the spring of '23. Spring of '23 is when we'd expect to have actual residents. Hopefully start developing the summer of 2022 with some asphalt and pavement done by the end of the year. And then have homes start to be occupied in the summer, fall of 2023. It would be developed all in one phase, not in different phases, because, right, that's not that big, but only 43 acres. The staff has asked us for 11 commitments, and Lenar has agreed to all of those commitments. The staff had made a favorable recommendation to this, to the Plan Commission. We attended a Plan Commission meeting. We had sent out about 65 notices to our surrounding property owners. I had two calls, just questions about what the type of community that was going to be built at the Plan Commission hearing. We did not have any remonstrates. We had no objection. This represents, would represent a significant increase in the assessed value of the site. Assessed value now is about $74,000. It's a farm field. You know, it'd be in the range of 30 or 40 million dollars once it's built out as a single-family and attached townhome development. The, the sum is that the homes would range in size from 1,600 or 1,700 square feet for the townhomes to up to 3,200 square feet plus or minus for the two-story homes. With that, we would be glad answering questions you might have, and we thank you for your time allowing us to make these presentations.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Tu?
I'm really nice, President.
Oh, thank you. Plan Commission, was that unanimous?
Yes.
There's that one question. The tree line that you showed along the railroad tracks, was that on the Nazi side or on your side?
A lot is actually on our side. I took that photograph. Now, there are some over on the Nazi side, but less. So, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, there's, there's some trees on our side.
You intend to leave those?
We do. I mean, we're going to put that path longer, but the ones that can stay between that and the path, we may have to leave. We, that's quite a good screen next to the industrial.
Yeah, I thought so. All right, any other questions?
Make a motion to preempt the final signing.
Project. All right, we have a motion to amend ordinance 2148 to exclude vinyl siding as a use.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Ms. Gibson. Any just questions or discussion on this amendment?
What seems to be implied is there's an issue with that.
No, sir. Yeah. All right, anything else? Hearing none, then roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2148.
Bates.
I.
Campbell.
I.
Dine.
I.
Gibson.
I.
Hopper.
I.
Lexi.
I.
Dillon.
Nay.
And Williams.
I.
Ordinance 2148 is amended on a vote of seven to one. Any further discussion on ordinance 2148 as amended? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2148.
Campbell.
I.
Dine.
I.
Gibson.
I.
Hopper.
I.
Lexi.
I.
Dillon.
Nay.
Williams.
I.
And Bates.
I.
Ordinance 2148 passes seven to one. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
First reading, ordinance 2146.
An ordinance providing for an additional appropriation from the aviation fund to budget classification system to $175,000 sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion, someone? Motion, Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
By Ms. Gibson. This is scheduled for a public hearing. Open up a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against ordinance 2146, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hey, I'm Marvin Duke. I'd like to speak civil rights here in Greenwood. I would ask that you vote, Dan, if you're all fine, wonderful people, but I would ask that you vote against this additional appropriation. And you're talking about almost $3 a person for an airport that has had more managers than what you and I can count. It is a, you know, there's, there's, it's a fine line between helping out a department that's down and has a plan to recover. It's another thing to throw money at to, to enable bad behavior and bad business decisions. The airport has had all sorts of schemes to, quote, break even. And every year, they fall further and further from that mark. They should be really ahead of everything with the closing of the Franklin Flying Field, with being in a great location, with everything else Greenwood has given them. But they still need more money from the taxpayers. And I think it's time to be a tough parent and say, no! We've given you everything possible. It's time to try to make it on your own with a little bit less. The employees deserve raises more than the airport deserves additional funds. And I ask that you say no to this additional appropriation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Marvin Duke.
Mr. President, may I ask something?
I believe Mr. Wright would like to say something.
I did want to answer some of those concerns there. Number one, the airport does not operate on any taxpayer dollars. It is operated on funds that are generated from sales of fuel and also from rental repair space and use of the airfield. This additional appropriation is actually to allow them to purchase more fuel because the fuel sales have been higher than anticipated. So in order to buy that fuel so that we can turn around and sell it, we do need approval of the additional appropriation.
And this additional appropriation is out of the funds that are generated by the airport?
Yes, this is actually out of the funds from selling the fuel out of the airport. So we're just asking for the approval to get the spending to buy more of that fuel so that we can rebuild things, continue selling. We generally sell it at at least a minimum of $1 above whatever we are purchasing it for. Usually it's about $1.50 per gallon above what we purchase it for as well the price.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wright.
I just wanted, I was just going to ask Mr. Marvin Duke. I was just going to ask Mr. Marvin Duke if he was aware of what this actual ordinance was for. Because anytime that fuel is purchased, we, the council, we do purchase that involved. And then that money comes back in and replenishes it. So then that's in another account. So I just wanted to see if you were aware that this isn't money that you have to pay your money, so to speak, and it is replenished.
And I may ask her, I thank you for reading the ordinance. Did not explain that, and I was wrong. So I confess, I was wrong.
No problem. Just wanted to be sure that you realized what the money was being used for. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against ordinance 2146? Close the public hearing. Any discussion on the council, ordinance 2146. Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2146, first reading.
Dine.
I.
Gibson.
I.
Hopper.
I.
Lexi.
I.
Dillon.
I.
Williams.
I.
Bates.
I.
And Campbell.
I. Ordinance 2146 passes first reading eight to zero. Ordinance 2147.
An ordinance vacating plating drainage equipment located within Worthville Commerce Center Phase Two, Lot Two, sponsored by Campbell.
Do you have a motion, someone? Motion, Mr. Bates, second. Second by Mr. Dine. This is also scheduled for a public hearing. Open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against ordinance 2147, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, you actually have Justin Olasky from American Structure Point joining via Zoom tonight. As mentioned, just going to give a brief overview of what we're trying to accomplish with this ordinance. Throughout the, the Worthville Commerce Center Phase Two plating process, we dedicated a drainage easement that was intended to drain existing right away on Allen Road. Throughout the process, as this overall development has developed, the Lot Two that this easement was located has changed. And the storm infrastructure is no longer going to be in the originally platted location. As such, we are currently working with staff to dedicate a new easement in the new storm sewer location that is required with a replat that is currently scheduled to be approved on, hopefully, November 15th by Board of Public Works, which will rededicate this drainage easement. So this is a cleanup exercise that allows us to remove a unneeded drainage easement from our overall Worthville Commerce Center development.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against ordinance 2147? Seeing none and hearing none, close the public hearing. Any discussion on the council? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2147, first reading.
Gibson.
I.
Hopper.
I.
Lexi.
I.
Dillon.
I.
Williams.
I.
Bates.
I.
Campbell.
I.
And Dine.
I.
Ordinance 2147 passes first reading eight to zero. Resolution 2123.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council approving an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Greenwood and the town of Whiteman regarding certain road improvements on South Emerson Avenue sponsored by Bates and Campbell.
Do you have a motion? Someone? Motion by Mr. Dine, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion? Seeing none, then roll call, resolution 2123, first reading.
Hopper.
I.
Lexi.
I.
Dillon.
I.
Williams.
I.
Bates.
I.
Campbell.
I.
Dine.
I.
And Gibson.
I.
Resolution 2123 passes first reading eight to zero. Resolution 2124.
A resolution declaring certain real property improvements for tax-abeying Teagerman Heating, Pooling and Plumbing Inc., sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Do you have a motion, someone? Motion, Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? Seeing none, then roll call, resolution 2124, first reading.
Lexi.
I.
Dillon.
I.
Williams.
I.
Bates.
I.
Campbell.
I.
Dine.
Nay.
Gibson.
I.
And Hopper.
I. Resolution 2124 passes first reading seven to one. Second reading, resolution 2122.
A resolution establishing holidays for employees of the city agreement for the year 2022 sponsored by Gibson and Hopper.
Do you have a motion, someone? Motion, Mr. Bates, second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion? Seeing none, then roll call, resolution 2122, second reading.
Dillon.
I.
Williams.
I.
Bates.
I.
Campbell.
I.
Dine.
I.
Gibson.
I.
Hopper.
I.
And Lexi.
I.
Resolution 2122 passes second reading eight to zero. Ordinance 2145.
An ordinance of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay for certain capital expenditures and street system projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith. And on account of the issuance of the bonds, cooperating proceeds thereof, and non-managing related there too, sponsored by Bates.
Do you have a motion?
Someone?
Motion by Mr. Dine, second. Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion, ordinance 2145. Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2145, second reading.
Williams.
I.
Bates.
I.
Campbell.
I.
Dine.
I.
Gibson.
I.
Hopper.
I.
Lexi.
I.
And Dillon.
I.
Ordinance 2145 passes second reading eight to zero. New business introduction of new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance number 2149.
An ordinance amending the 2022 salary ordinance, common council ordinance number 2137, to increase the maximum hourly rate for part-time substitute assistants, part-time building security officer, and part-time records clerk in the police department, sponsored by Dine.
Chief. Good evening, Chief Vice Superintendent. This was an oversight on my part when it came to the salary ordinance, the additional funds for two part-time positions, the part-time building security and part-time records clerk. That line item was increased. I just failed to ask for the additional. That line item was increased. I just failed to ask for the additional one point five percent increase, which would be raising the building security officer hourly rate from twenty dollars an hour to twenty dollars and thirty cents an hour, and increasing the part-time records clerk hourly rate from fifteen seventy-five an hour to fifteen ninety-nine an hour.
All right, any questions from chief? All right, thank you. Ordinance twenty-one fifty.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the common council of the city of Greenwood, Indiana for the year twenty-two sponsored by Campbell.
Just so everybody knows, same ordinance as before, just a different number. All right, any questions? All right, miscellaneous business. This is the second opportunity for members of the audience to address the council. This time on matters that are not on the agenda. So if you would like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and there's a five-minute time limit. Anybody online? All right. Hearing none, then council miscellaneous business. All of you should have received a copy of the proposed meeting schedule for twenty-twenty-two. Any questions about it? First of all, any questions?
Yeah, I, just, the seventeenth is a federal holiday. Maybe we should move that one to the nineteenth, that way.
The February of January.
So January.
Yeah. That way folks in the community, if they happen to have the day off, they don't have to worry about coming to our meeting on a Monday night, and they have to have the day off.
All right. So January seventeenth is a federal holiday, and Mr. Hopper's making a motion that we amend this to make the meeting instead of Monday, January seventeenth to Wednesday, January the nineteenth. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like some? All right, that passes unanimously. Do you have a motion to accept the suggested meeting calendar as? Those, Mr. Hopper, second, by Mr. Dine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. Any other council business? All right. Corporation counsel?
We do. In the audience this evening, we have with us Elise Bowling. She is the assistant city attorney who was hired to promote vacant state left by Cerveter Chicken. And we would like you to see her and get acquainted with her. She brings with her a lot of wonderful litigation experience, and she has worked in government for state handling.
Good. Welcome aboard, thank you. Any else?
No, that's all we have.
Any good controller?
Nothing.
Mr. Mayor?
I have nothing.
We are adjourned.